Okay.
All right, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to open the April 30th, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting.
Seconded.
Motion made in second discussion. Okay, no discussion, roll call vote, Richie Lombard, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Josh Antrim, aye.
That motion passes. I have open comments here to read. The annual town election has been postponed until Saturday, June 20th, 2020. That's the town election, the annual town meeting has been postponed until Saturday, June 27th, 2020. And you can purchase your beach parking sticker on the hot dog org. And the new meeting notice hyperlink on homepage of town website notice of all public meetings. And the Charles Kelly Scholarship deadline has been extended through to May 15th, 2020. And the boat launching date has been postponed until May 21st instead of the 15th. And that's all the opening comments I have. New business?
New business.
Any comments, any opening comments? Go with Josh first.
Well, I'd just like to take the opportunity to express our condolences, you know, from the whole town on the passing of Mr. Colin Cullen and Mark's father. He was truly an icon in Nahat and patriarch to, you know, the extended Cullen family, so just on behalf of government and all of us here want to express our sincere.
I'll second that motion and he was fantastic, great, great guy. Good, a good friend and I'm sorry to hear passing, I, Mark knows, I just, he was one of the, you know, as I say, great guy, great guy. And you know, Mark, you want to say anything?
Well, I just want to thank you guys for bringing that up, I appreciate it, it's been tough for the family and for my mother, but, you know, I just want to say that, you know, my father loved the town. He loved his experience being a police officer in town and being the police chief in town. So, of course, like anybody else, he's going to be missed soon, I think the summer crew is going to miss him the most.
Definitely, I was, I was going to say, you know, Mark, he was such a good guy and he was kind of like a grandfather to, to me and all of, you know, Betsy and Matt's friends. He was just, and then especially getting to work with him as a summer kid on the, on the, with the DPW, I mean, he's the best, he was the best worker we ever had, you know. Nonstop, I'm sure he'd be out there, he was going to work this summer, so, I, you know, I'm truly sorry for your loss and, you know, I know, I know we're going to have, you, you, there's going to be a drive-by week this weekend on Sunday from two to four, there's been, you know, postings about it on Facebook and for anybody that is listening that's planning on attending, there should be signage, you know, just go down Winter Street, head towards the back rocks marginal road and then turn up Ocean Street and there'll be signage, there'll be plenty of, there'll be police officers directing traffic too, so. We're with you, Mark, we're with you and your family on this one.
All right, thanks pal, thank you, everybody. Okay, new business, Rich, I approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from February 20th, 2020.
Motion made in second discussion. All those in favor, sing by saying aye, roll call vote, I say aye, Richie Lombard.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Josh Antrim, aye.
So the agenda is the Summer Park League discussion, Tony, you want to take it?
Sure. We, we are, you know, we're starting to look at, you know, as, as, I think everybody knows now, the governor has extended the stay-at-home advisory until May 18th. We are starting to look at, as is all municipalities, you know, what the phase, phase-in approach back to, you know, normal way of life is going to look like and how we're going to do that. And, you know, one of the, one of those things are Park League and sailing program. And even, you know, summer kids at DPW and seasonal employees there too, so we are, we're taking a look at it, you know. We're, we're going to work with Jen McCarthy and, and find out from the, the kids that, you know, run the Park League, what they're, how they feel about coming back to work and, you know, hopefully, I don't see anything like happening before June 1st, to be honest, but, you know, maybe we could get something back going around June. You know, it depends, it depends really on, on the numbers here in Nahat and in Massachusetts and, and, you know, we, we have, the playgrounds are currently closed and the open fields and, and everything is closed but for passive recreation only, so, you know, I, I, we put it on the agenda, on the agenda tonight to let people know that, you know, as we cross into May here, we are, you know, we're actively working on how it's going to look, you know, how, how we're going to go through this process and what we're going to do. We don't have any final decisions yet, but, you know, and honestly, I'm not sure what the, what the typical start date is of Park League, but I would admit, you know, we're, we're looking at a delay in, in most of those types of gatherings. You know, until, until the numbers reduce a little bit more, I don't feel truly comfortable opening up the playgrounds, you know, without the ability to disinfect them, you know, regularly, so. You know, that's kind of what we're, we're on, all the calls that, you know, I'm sure Deb, if you want to, if you want to chime in here, but, you know, all the calls that conversations I've been on with the state about, you know, everything related to phasing back in is that it's hard to, you're going to come up with some phase, some phases, but it's hard to really tell when you're going to jump from phase one to phase two to phase three, right? Because it's not really a time-based decision, it's more how are the numbers reacting to the decisions or the, or the changes in phase one. And those numbers are typically about a week and a half behind, so, you know, it's kind of like, you know, if you open up playgrounds and you open up restaurants and you open up beaches and you open up parking lots and then the numbers start to spike, you don't know which one of those things really caused that spike or, you know, and you don't know about, until about like two weeks later, so.
That's very true.
Yeah, so Deb, do you want to jump in a little bit?
No, I think everything you're saying, Tony, is absolutely right, I, today I was involved in multiple discussions with other communities about, of course, we don't have a high school, but we do have swan scot, but how are they going to hold high school graduations? And so there were all different, you know, different views on what to do, they even had input from all the states, you know, the southern states and how they're dealing with it. And, you know, it's a struggle, everybody's trying to figure out what is the best way to, to do something like this, but the majority of the people that were responding were going to hold graduations, but the graduates were not going to be able to get out of their cars. It was going to be more like a parade type of thing with only two speakers and they can't even get out of the cars to like accept their diplomas. So you can see that even with the planning, nobody is quite ready to make that step to put people out in the public. You know, more or less changing what we have now, so. The playgrounds, you know, I, I would guess that they don't usually open anyway until school's out, the summer programs, which is probably like around June 18th or so, maybe we'll have more information by then, but our numbers in Nahat, I can say, are, I think we're in a very good place right now, we're starting to really, you know, everything's kind of like settling down a little bit. The people at the Jasmine that were positive are all doing well now, you know, it's been well over the two-week quarantine period, so I, you know, I'm cautiously optimistic here that things, like I said, we're, we're getting to a much better place than we were. But as far as bringing people together on the beaches and well, I don't think, of course, we're not ready yet, and I think you're right, we just have to see what's going on in the rest of the state because we know if we open something here, it's not just for the people in this town, it's, you know, it's for people that want to enjoy those and it could have a bigger influx of, of more people as well, so. I just, you know, we have, we're seeing the data every week and we see it daily, we just have to keep an eye on it. And of course, there's the testing piece, you know, there's a lot of talk now about community testing, so I'll be interested where that goes because I really think that would give us a lot more information than we currently have.
Right.
This is Mark, I got a question, when can grandparents hire their grandkids?
I know, Mark, I had, I had a birthday party tonight at 4:30, another drive-by parade, put the present on the lawn, it's our third one this month and but I did hear though from one of the doctors was, for all of those people that are having babies now and the grandparents feel like so left out of everything. If you quarantine for two weeks, which means like total quarantine in your home, you know, no shopping, no stores at all, just in your home for two weeks and you have no symptoms whatsoever, you could go visit that newborn baby with a mask on briefly. So that's a little encouraging. But aside from that, Mark, I just put the present on the front lawn and got back in the car. But what can you do?
So do any of the members of the board have any questions about Park League and what we're thinking there or any, or any suggestions? I'll say that, you know, when it comes to DPW and, and seasonal employees there, you know, we have some younger, you know, college, high school, college kids that will work in the summer and where, you know, again, I don't, I don't see them coming back before June or putting them to work before June, but I'm a little more comfortable with potentially bringing them in than I am, say, you know, our typical older seasonal employees. So, you know, it's, it's not, when you're, when you're looking at these phases and, and how you're going to set it up, it's not only, you know, the, the environment in which that action would take place, but it's also the vulnerability of the population that would be partake, partaking in that action, so, you know, with Park League, you know, younger kids, but of course, you know, you don't want, which is, which is better, but you don't, you don't want to have them all jumping on top of each other or, you know, running all over the, running all over the playgrounds if they're not being disinfected, so, a lot to consider there, we obviously want to get, get kids out and and have them, I'm sure they're dying to get out of, get out of, get out of the house too, at least I would have been at this point, but I don't know, nowadays it's all video games, so. We're working on it, so really, I just wanted to have that on the agenda so that folks in town would know, have a, have some, you know, comfort, I guess, in that we're thinking about it and we're working on some type of approach there.
Okay, ongoing business. The approval of the sale of the water bond to the NWRA dated May 18th, 2020, Josh, motion?
Josh, this is a, this is a long one, you're muted there, Josh.
Then let me know.
This is a long motion, just so you know, you know, it's required, we have, we have Vicky on the line who can answer any questions on sweet, once you read the motion, we get into discussion about the whole thing, but this really long motion that you're about to read is required through the NWRA and I actually have it up on my computer, so I will share my screen so people who are on here can follow along as you read.
All right. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote that the sale of the $218,000 water bond of the town dated May 18th, 2020 to the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, the authority, is hereby approved and the town treasurer and other appropriate town official is authorized to execute on behalf of the town a loan agreement and a financial assistance agreement with the authority with respect to the bond. The bond shall be payable without interest on May 15th of the years and in the principal amounts as follows. Year one, 2021, the installment is $21,800 and that continues each year until 2030 in the amount of
Josh, Josh? In your first paragraph, it was, you mentioned 218, it was 318,000?
Yes, sorry, 318,000, so the
And this one, and the other one is 31,800? I think you said two.
The total, the total bond is $318,000. Pay it back over 10 years, starting in 2021, at 31,800 each year through 2030. 31,800. And further vote that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk and the town treasurer and hereby are authorized to take any and all actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts and other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing vote.
Is there a second?
Seconded by Mark Cullen.
Motion's been made in second, further discussion?
I do have some discussion, Tony, you might pick up on this. So this is sort of an annual event that we get from, a borrowing we get from NWRA for still interest. So I understand that this, this borrowing is for replacement of water mains. And those water mains will be from Walton Road, from Woff Street to Forty Steps Lane, from Furbish Road, from Walton Road to Willow Road, Mills Terrace from Little Nahat to the end, and Howe Road, from Little Nahat to Nahat Road to the hydrant, the Howe Road extension. I'm not sure if you have this information, but I assume those are all like full replacement lines, like eight-inch?
Zach and, Zach's on the line as well, Zach and Vicky are on the line, so they can answer that question.
Okay, why don't have Zach and Vicky do that?
That's correct, Mark, eight-inch lines.
They're, they're going to be replaced with eight-inch, the existing, some are like two-inch, four-inch, they're really, but the new will be all eight, yes.
All eight, Dr. Lion pipe?
Actually using PVC.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's good.
I mean, all of the, all of them are just in the areas that are below sea level, side areas.
Zach, I thought it was all, I haven't looked at the plans lately.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be all, Mark, just to get a better cost on the pipe rather than having two different materials because we're going to use the plastic pipe on Furbish Road because of the groundwater conditions. We'll just also use that pipe on Howe and Mills as well.
So, could you explain, Zach, the work on Howe Road to Mills? Is that going to, how, how are you making the connection from Howe Road to Mills Terrace?
So, their existing services, they're actually one, they're only one-inch services that come from Mills Terrace and they, they feed the last two or three residents on Howe Road. They actually go through 17 Mills Terrace property, there's four, or excuse me, three services that run underneath that property, so. We decided that, you know, putting an easement in place was going to be difficult, so we're going to use the one inches to loop it. It's obviously not desirable to have a one inch, but it does give you some flow. But the, the main idea on Mills Terrace is that the hydrant at the bottom had very poor flow during testing. So by putting that, putting that eight, replacing the six inch with an eight will give us the fire flows we need down there.
Yeah, I, I was just wondering how you're going to get from Howe to Mills and it sounds like you want to avoid the easement, which I agree with, and as long as you have the flow with a one inch, that's fine.
Yep, so we're going to connect, we're going to connect to one of those one-inch services just to allow some flow through there. Looping of the system.
Zach, when will this start?
What's that?
There's Richie, when will this project get underway?
Bidding, I believe is, Vicky, is next week bidding?
Yeah, it's pretty soon, in the next week, I think.
I think, I think bidding is next week and then, um,
I think it's Monday.
I believe we're giving them a six, 60-day performance period, so that'll allow the contractor from signing of contract 60 days to get the work complete, so. It'll happen relatively quickly once we get contracts going.
Oh, good.
We, we basically took, you know, a number of authorizations of MWRA borrowing and combined them to do this job. All of these have been voted on by the town, they've been approved by the town, given us the authorization to go ahead and borrow. Now, we're at the phase where the Board is, you know, some of these require the Board of Selectmen tonight to vote for us to go ahead and do the borrowing. And Brendan Corrit, the town treasurer's on the, on the call too, if you have any questions on the finance side.
Well, this is, this is interest from MWRA is zero, right?
Yes, yep.
Yeah.
Zero interest.
No, yes, okay.
We have, you know, as, so long as the MW, you know, we got a ton of water work that can be done in the town and so long as the MWRA is offering this 0% interest loan, in my opinion, it makes sense for us to be getting the authorization to borrow under it and I believe we even added some to this year's warrant, again. So as long as they're offering a deal like this, you know, it's worth taking advantage of.
Absolutely, take care of it. I would just make sure it's well-publicized what areas, you know, the, you know, the timetable and what streets are going to be done and etcetera so that the people involved, the streets are aware of it, you know.
Tony, it's Mark again, I don't expect an answer tonight, but maybe we can put it on the agenda for the future. I know that some of the requirements for participating in this low, low, loan program include a flushing program of our hydrants, a cross-connection program and also a water quality testing program that the town maintains. So I guess, you know, again, we don't have to get into it tonight, but I'd like to try to put it on the agenda for the future what the flushing program is going to be for our hydrants over the next year, it might not be a bad time when, you know, people are not working now and those types of things, although it may not be a good time, but just to think about it, I would like to talk about the flushing program and make sure that that's going, and I also want to talk about the cross-connection program at some point.
Mark, I could, I could speak to, to a couple of those, the, the testing we do have in place, we test every two weeks. Those tests are brought over to MWRA in Chelsea. The hydrant flushing, we are planning to do this year. Along with, with testing simultaneously while we're flushing the hydrants. What was the third?
The cross-connection.
Cross-connection, so we do do cross-connection sampling, I believe Weston Sampson does it for us yearly. And Vicky, I don't know if you want to speak, I believe the ASR report that you were working on had something with the backflow.
Yeah, so every year, the, every water system has to report to DEP an annual statistical report and one of the worksheets in that report is all the backflow data, so how many devices you have through town, how many are, you know, what, what types they are, what size, who tested them, the test results. So Nahat uses Weston Sampson as a contract tester and they do all the testing and provide us with a concise report every year that we then populate up to the annual statistical report. So that's pretty much, I think, you have a handle on that, the backflow.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
But Mark, we may want to wait till people go to work. Seems like they may be using a lot more water in home a lot more, so.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
Who is that? Is that?
Zach.
Hey Zach, that's a great idea. Let's not shut, shut the water off at 7:00 AM, people take a shower. Wait till 9:00, I know on Ocean Street I got caught. Been taking a shower for three days, but anyway, just got a picture.
We also have someone along those lines, MWRA is going to be coming out in the spring to do a a pretty intense water leak detection because we had a decent amount of leaks last year and we believe we fixed what we had, but just the flows didn't really match up, so. We've spoken with them and that'll be during the spring too.
That's good.
Very good.
Very good.
Okay, if you have no other questions, there's a motion on the floor.
I seconded by, I already seconded a bitch.
Yep, motion's been made in second, no other further discussion? This will be a roll call vote, Richie Lombard, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Josh Antrim, aye.
Okay, that passes, unanimous, next. The Board of Health, the approval of an emergency order issued by the Board of Health, appointed agent, the guy, five people in the essential businesses, facial covering, signage, essential business. Facial covering, signage, essential businesses, and delineation of at least six feet of social distancing. Any discussion on that?
Uh, yeah. If I'm, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Tony.
I'm sharing my screen here for people to read along. I can...
We're still seeing the MWRA bond.
Oh, okay. Let me see. Here we go. How's that?
That's it.
Okay, so this emergency order I put in place to go into effect tomorrow after you vote to approve today. And I'll just read, read through it, if that's okay with you. Whereas on March 10, 2020, Charles Baker, Governor Charles Baker, acting pursuant to the powers provided by Chapter 639 of the Acts of 1950 and General Law, Chapter 17, Section 2A, declared that there existed in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts a state of emergency due to the outbreak of the 2019 novel coronavirus. And whereas on March 11, 2020, the COVID-19 outbreak was characterized as a pandemic by the World Health Organization. And whereas on March 17, 2020, the Nahat Board of Health declared a local state of emergency in the town of Nahat and pursuant to General Law, Chapter 111, Section 30, appointed myself, Antonio Barletta, Town Administrator, its agent during the local state emergency. Whereas the Nahat Board of Health is urging all Nahat residents and visitors to limit activities outside and to practice social distancing at all times, both inside and outside of the home, to limit the spread of highly contagious and deadly virus. Whereas as of April 14, 2020, the town of Nahat had 733.51 per 100,000 residents at the 13th highest rate of infection among the Commonwealth's 351 municipalities. And whereas as of April 29, 2020, the town of Nahat's rate of infection had increased to 886.33 per 100,000 residents. And whereas the declarations of local and state of emergency statutes and regulations such as General Law, Chapter 111, Section 95 through 122, Section 13 of Chapter 639 of the Acts of 1950, 310 CMR 11.01, 105 CMR 300.001, and any other authorizing statutes or regulations empower the Nahat Board of Health during the effective period of declared emergencies to exercise any and all authority over persons and property necessary or expedient for meeting a state of emergency, including but not limited to authority over public assemblages and in order to protect the health and safety of persons, regulating the sale of articles of food and household articles, and policing protection and preservation of public and private property. Now, therefore, the Nahat Board of Health, through its appointed agent, in order to take additional measures to protect the town and Nahat's public health during COVID-19 public health emergency in light of current conditions, hereby orders the following. So, number one is face covering. All members of the public entering any essential business as defined by the governor, by Governor Baker's COVID-19 executive order, must wear face covering such as a fabric mask, scarf, or bandana over his or her nose and mouth. Face covering does not have to be a surgical mask or N95 respirator. Those should be left for medical professionals and first responders. So, the, you know, first main takeaway from this order is that, starting tomorrow, anyone entering an essential business in the town of Nahat must wear a face mask. I will say that I spoke to a couple of essential business owners already, and they all said, like, somewhere between, you know, ninety, ninety-five percent of their customers are already doing this. Number two, all employees of the essential businesses shall wear face covering over their mouth and nose when interacting with the public or when said employee is within six feet of a coworker. Again, you know, I spoke with a central business, a couple of essential business owners already, and many are already doing that. The other, oh. Formalizing that any essential businesses permitting entry to the general public through, shall through open and obvious markings designate six-foot spaces within their premises, leading from that essential business point of contact with the public, enabling the general public to maintain the appropriate social distancing. So, you've seen it a lot on the floors of the businesses already, showing, you know, stay six feet apart from, from, from the person that's in the building with you. And a lot of that is already happening, but just formalizing that it, that it be here. And tomorrow I will have new signage prepared and distributed so that it can be, you know, that says face covering, six-foot distance, and the next one on there for those businesses to post. The next one is the other big takeaway from this order is that any and all essential businesses permitting entry to general public shall permit no more than five customers inside its premises at one time. An employee of such establishment shall be designated to ensure that the maximum occupancy of the essential business is not exceeded. So, the governor has a ten-person limit in his executive order. We are, we are going a step further and doing a five-person limit. Again, you know, most of our businesses are, are smaller and don't have, you know, don't have more than five people in there at the same time anyways. And when we put out the ten, when we, when we put out the signage originally for ten people only, or less...
They changed it anyway.
They actually changed it on their own. Seaside variety and seaside pizza, and Mark changed it to five. They wanted less people in the building. So, I don't, you know, suspect any pushback there. So, next one is signage, and there is an enforcement clause here that allows for violations of the emergency order to result in a civil fine of $300 per violation. But I will say that I've spoken with Chief Dwyer, and we will be leaning on the side of education over issuing any type of financial, you know, penalty. But we do have a $300 violation clause in here. I guess I'll just sum it up with saying that, as we were talking about earlier, you know, the town in Nahat, you know, everything, the level of activity in our community directly correlates to the weather. And as the weather is getting better, more people are out and about, and more people are in town, you know, and we're heading in that, you know, we're, we're heading in that direction. We, you know, while Dunkin' Donuts and Richland and Tides and the golf course technically have the authority to be open right now, they, they haven't been, but they can come back online so long as they meet, you know, the governor's order requirements. So, Richland's back open. I believe Dunkin' Donuts is looking to get back open soon. So, you know, as we see activity increasing in town and as we see businesses starting to open their doors again, we really want to make sure that we prevent any type of secondary spike. And so, you know, as we mentioned at the last Board of Select meeting, where I mentioned that I believe, you know, now it's, now more than ever is important that we stay disciplined, stay diligent, and protect each other so that we don't see, you know, a secondary spike with, you know, a lot more activity occurring in town. Dan Scrip helped write the executive order. If you have any questions about what the language in the document, and Deb, the help, our health nurse is on the phone as well, if you have any questions about the order itself.
Well, that was a lot of words, but what it boils down to is you have to wear a mask when you go into a business. You have to stay six feet away from other customers in the business, and it can be no more than five customers in the business at any one time. So, that's really it in a nutshell. Pretty simple, very easy to comply with.
So, Tony, I move that the Board of Health pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 111, Section 30, vote to approve the emergency order issued on Thursday, April 30, 2020, by the Board of Health-appointed agent regarding additional COVID-19 precautions.
Is there a second?
I seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
I just want, we settled a lot. Tony, thank you for your leadership on this, and Debbie Murphy, thank you for your leadership on this.
Okay, it'll be a roll call vote. Richie Lombard, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Josh Andrew, aye.
Motion passes. Your name is? Okay, next on the agenda, Town Administrator's report.
You know, I think, I think I've probably said enough already. You know, we're, we're continuing to analyze whether or not we're gonna be able to have a meeting on June 27. We still haven't gotten any new, you know, really new guidance from the state as to when they're gonna be releasing the House budget, which is going to be a huge piece information for us as we plan for next year's budget. So, we are, you know, hoping for that soon. And with town election, I mentioned last time that we are looking for volunteers, for anyone looking to get involved. We, you know, we will be doing things a little bit differently this year because of coronavirus. There's, folks, if, if folks want to vote through absentee ballot or mail in an absentee ballot, reach out to the clerk's office or, or email Carol Nelson at cnelson@nahat.org and request for that, for that absentee, for an application for an absentee ballot. And you can submit that absentee ballot all the way up until, you know, the day before, the day before the election on June 20. For May 29 is the last day to register as a voter. And just so people know, we'll be, we'll be planning out some social distancing compliant type logistics for, for the polling station this year. So, as we get closer, we will provide as much information about that as, as possible. There is a new, I'm just looking back at some of the opening comments. We did have some questions about the community calendar, and now that we're posting our meetings online, they, there's a a tab on the homepage on nahat.org that you can click on to get, it's, we'll still have our postings on community calendar going forward, but there's also a secondary tab there on the homepage to take a look at whatever meetings. And then, you know, that, the Charles Calley Scholarship that you announced, we still have yet to receive an essay or an applicant. So, wide open. So, anybody that's interested, you know, please mail or drop off in the Dropbox your scholarship application by May 15. I think, I think the, I don't know, someone, I just heard cricket, so I think that's my...
That was my phone.
Is that my, is that my cue, Deb?
I respect your presence.
That's my cue, I think.
Well, that's a $1,000 scholarship, so I'm sure there must be some college students that could benefit from that assistance.
I know, I know, that's interesting.
Write the essay and get it submitted, I think he's...
So, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you. Any questions of the Town Administrator?
Dan Scrip got something.
The application for the early voting ballot can be submitted at the late date for the election, but the actual submission of the ballot can be acted on the day of, to be a link in the book. So, you can actually submit your ballot the day of the election.
Okay, so, yeah, you were skipping out a little bit, Dan, but I think what you were saying was that if anybody's submitting an absentee ballot, you can actually submit it up until the day of June 20, the day of the election. Obviously, if you are, if you are being super cautious and staying home and requesting us to mail you an absentee ballot that you're gonna fill out at home and then mail back to us, don't wait until, you know, the day before, because the, you know, we've noticed that the mail service has slowed down because of coronavirus. So, but we can just reach out to Carol Nelson, and we'll, we'll make arrangements.
Right. And Tony, are we encouraging people to bring their own pens for the voting?
We're still, we'll get there. We're still working on, on how we're gonna, how we're gonna run it. You know, we may have, we were talking today about potentially having, you know, gloves on the, at the entrance door, and then you grab your ballot, you go fill it out with a pen, and then you submit your ballot and throw your gloves in the trash. And then maybe having a couple volunteers just for extra cautious, you know, be extra cautious to be cleaning pens, spraying boots, you know, in between uses.
But that's an option, though, right? If people want to bring their own pens?
I think so. The only thing we were, like, curious about was, can you use any pen, like, will any pen show up in the machine? So, you know, it might need to be a certain color, it may need to be a certain, you know, I, I don't know. So, we're, we're, we're gonna, we'll figure that out and, and go from there. Also, I'll, just another public kind of announcement, too, is the Memorial Day Parade is, you know, we haven't made a decision quite yet on that. I'm gonna be speaking with Molly Conlin tomorrow about it. So, you know, I just, we will put, we will let people know as soon as possible whether that is gonna be canceled or, you know, there's gonna be, if we do have a Memorial Day Parade, it's certainly gonna be different from years past. There won't be any sort of public gathering at the cemetery or, you know, walking parade. It would be some like, something like a motorcade if we, you know, if we do have something. So, working on those logistics as well. We really want to, although there's a lot of communities that have canceled Memorial Day Parades, and I know it's a, there's a, there's a long history of it here in town, so we're, we're gonna make the extra effort to try to see if there's a way we can do something on that day.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
Anything else, Tony?
No, that's it. I just, I guess I'll say to folks on the phone or people on Zoom that if you have any questions or comments that you want to participate in the next part of the meeting, Citizens Forum, please enter it in the chat. I don't have any activity on my, on my screen right now.
I want to just take a minute to talk about one thing. The zoning bylaw change that was overwhelmingly voted on by the Nahat voters a last fall. There was a, there was a headline in the item about a week and a half ago saying that that was rejected. That is not a true statement. It's approved. Some of the language in that zoning bylaw change was, was not, was rejected, but the law was approved. change was, was not, was rejected, but the law was approved. Um, and it, it, what it boils down to is that, um, building in a natural resource area is allowed only to the extent that the, as allowed by the Dover Amendment. So, um, with that in mind, Tony, you and I have talked about this. I think that we need to have Nahat's legal counsel prepare, um, direction for the building inspector for responses and actions in sequence of events, in the event that a building permit application is submitted that is in a natural resource district. Um, so I just wanted to get that process started if it hasn't already.
It has.
Okay, great. Yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, it's important for all of us and the building inspector and all the relevant committees to be on the same page and prepared in advance.
Yeah, Josh, it's already in effect. The way the law states, it goes into effect the day it was voted by, in this case, special town meeting, in terms of regular, in terms of special, I'm sorry, in terms of applications for building permits and, and, and variances, it actually goes back to the first notice of the planning board meeting, which was June 11th, I believe. So it's in effect now. There are some requirements in terms of publishing and posting, but that's, that's just, you know, tying a loose ends. That's all that is. It's already, it's already, it's already in full motion.
Yeah, and, and we're putting together guidance as, you know, what the process is and what the process looks like. You know, there's, um, there's site plan review by the planning board, how the CONCOM would be involved, and how ZBA would potentially be involved, and, you know, that whole thing. So we are definitely, um, trying to be prepared for something.
I would agree with that, just that, you know, town council makes all of the various boards and committees, um, know, um, what their responsibilities are regarding the changes in the bylaw.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's fairly complicated legal matter. So, um, you know, frankly, it's not fair to necessarily expect the building inspector, for example, to be up to speed on those legal matters. So we just want to provide that guidance.
Um, okay.
Is that Tony, off on us?
Yes.
Okay, the next on the, on the agenda is the, the Citizens Forum. Is there any citizens that's listening in would like to say something?
So again, if you, if you have any comments or you want to participate in the meeting, please, please click on the chat function at the bottom of the screen and type a message in there. I don't see anything right now.
Okay, we'll give them a few minutes. Uh, give them a chance, if they want to jump on and say something.
Quiet group.
I'm sorry?
It's a quiet group tonight.
Surprise for the, it's a lousy day, couple days. Anyways, um, is there any, anyone listening in, any from the audience that would like to say anything? Say anything?
I can click unmute. Oh, hold on a second. I'm gonna unmute. If anybody, you know, has loud music going on, I'm gonna unmute everyone to see if anybody, all right.
He's, Tony, I would imagine that town moderator would love to have that ability to mute and unmute people.
I know, I know. I know. All right. So everyone is, you know, I've, I've unmuted everybody on my end. Um, is there anybody in the audience that called in that would like to participate in Citizens Forum?
Hi, it's Debbie Vander Slice. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to thank you all for keeping our government going during this crisis. I think it's wonderful, the communication that has taken place and the way that you all continue to meet regularly. I just want to thank you and show my appreciation.
Thank you very much for that comment.
Miss Debbie, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And the Town Administrator. Uh, anyone else, anyone else in the town would like to say anything while we're on Citizens Forum?
Richie.
Yes.
Joe Melo.
Joe, go ahead.
I have nothing to say.
I'm sorry?
I have nothing to say.
All right, Joe.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Who is that?
It's Michelle Capano.
Go ahead.
So with the new executive order for the Board of Health, just to be clear, it's only to wear face coverings in places of businesses. People don't have to wear them out in the public if they're going for a walk or working in their yard or anything like that.
Correct.
Correct, correct. We're, um, we are strongly urging it. Um, the CDC strongly urges it, but we are not requiring it with this executive.
Thank you.
Tony, can I, can I just say something about that?
Sure.
So as far as going out for a walk, there's a lot of people that are walking, um, you know, side by side, which is okay, but if it's a family member, if you're taking a walk with somebody from the, another household, I would say if you're within the six feet of walking, that you should wear a mask in that situation. If you're walking alone or if you're walking with your own family, I think it's a different story. But, uh, you know, just, just keep that in mind, because there's a lot of friends that get together and go walking, and it's, that's fine. But because, like I said, they're from different households, I would still take that precaution.
Good point.
Unless you're walking on opposite sides of the street. Right.
Good point. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we could put, you know, I'm not sure if the mandatory wearing a mask in town, like other cities of towns doing it now, if you're outside, not a bad idea. I'd have it mandatory for a mask outside if you're gonna go for a walk. A lot of people have them, a lot of them don't. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, um, you know, I've talked to a lot of our, you know, our neighboring communities. I spoke to the Attorney General's Office as well. Um, while we technically have the authority to do that, um, they advise to perceive a caution on requiring folks to wear masks out, just out in the general public, um, in that, um, you know, strongly urging it is, is, is a good way to go. Um, you know, it's tough to enforce just generally out in the public. There's a lot of scenarios that are safe that don't necess, like Debbie just mentioned. Um, so, you know, a blanket policy for just anyone outside is, is a little bit tougher of a policy to, to enforce than to kind of expect out there. So, uh, you know, I'm happy to continue the conversation. Uh, right now, the executive order that we just approved doesn't include that. It's just for when you're going in the confined space in essential business.
Tony, just, uh, just from experience, someone that walks every day around town, and I see a lot of people, I think it's just a matter of respect and, um, you know, accountability. I mean, I wear a mask when I go out. I know sometimes when you're walking by yourself, there's no one on the road, and you're saying, well, I don't have the mask on. Um, you can always lower it from your face while you're walking if there's no one around. If another party or another individual is approaching you, just pull the mask up. It's no big deal. Um, and I see a lot of people doing that now. Um, I don't understand why people don't have a mask on their face, or at least on their body, while they're walking. I mean, I would hope that they would, they would do that. Not, not so much for themselves, but for, for other people. Um, and it's not, it's not a difficult thing to do. I'm not saying, I'm not saying we should mandate it, but I would just hope people would do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I guess the, I'll just add to that is that what we hear, and Deb, I'm sure Deb would agree with me, is that, you know, there's a lot of people that are asymptomatic, that don't know, you know, they're, they feel fine, and they, you know, and so they think, you know, I don't need a mask, I, you know, I haven't, I have no symptoms, or, um, you know, I feel great, you know, but you could have it and be asymptomatic. So it's, it is important, um, you know, when you're out there. And like I said, I, you know, for me, I look at it like we are heading into Memorial Day, right? We're heading into May, and the weather's getting better. This weekend, I'm sure it's gonna be busy. And, you know, I understand that, you know, people have been inside for a long time, um, and, you know, with nicer weather, they want to get outside, and, um, it seems like the curve is starting to flatten. Um, but, you know, there are other places in the world that saw a secondary spike that was four, three to four times higher than the first one. And I don't think anybody wants to restart this process. I don't think Deb wants to.
I don't want to.
You know, I just, I, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, Ms. Chairman, and about, about it. I don't think we're there yet as far as requiring it. Um, we're in a, I think, but, but personally, I'm strongly, strongly urging it. All right.
Ellis Court, I have a comment, if you can hear me. Um, I, I have a question then. What is the policy for the town employees who are out and about?
Um, like, you know, while working, you mean like DPW, Alice, or what do you, or police, fire?
Yeah. And, you know, just all the town employees who are out and, you know, on the, not in a building or in a, but out on the streets or going about their business. Are they required to wear masks or use six foot distancing? I know there's a number of things that might be quite difficult about that.
Well, while working, um, you know, the first thing that we're doing is public buildings, you know, while in, in public buildings are all closed to the public, and non-essential employees are working from home. Um, there are times where, um, people need to get into the town hall that work at the town hall, and we have gloves and masks available to them, and we're all entering one doorway, you know, and we have a, um, a system set up so that we're not, uh, all kind of working on top of each other at the same time. Uh, so we're doing things as best we can to protect each other's self, you know, employees of the town hall. Um, with the DPW, they are working somewhat of a skeleton crew. So three guys, um, we have, you know, six total, three guys are on, um, a day, and they rotate so that, uh, so that, you know, they're separated in different trucks, and they're staying, you know, the fear there was that if we had, you know, someone on the, if we had all six working and someone in the crew got sick, that, um, you know, we would potentially have to shut down the entire department. Uh, so trying to split them up so that we can isolate any type of thing like that. Um, but, uh, you know, police and fire, they have protocols and procedures in place that if they're responding to, um, any type of medical call or anything that, um, has reported symptoms, um, or, you know, we are aware that they are, you know, through the public, sorry, sorry, Rocco wants to participate in this conversation. Um, you know, if we, we also coordinate, they coordinate with, um, the public health nurse, they coordinate with the public health nurse on folks that are in quarantine, and if we are, you know, responding to any calls on those addresses, they know to be dressed up. Um, part of the challenge there, Alice, is the PPE, the personal protection, the supply is limited. So you don't want to like, you don't want to require that you're dressed fully at all times, because we'll just, we'll run through that equipment too quickly. So there's somewhat of a balance there that you have to play, but, um, I hope I was able to answer your question.
Tony, do you want me to add anything in terms of our policies for DPW?
Sure, while you're on the phone, yeah.
Uh, yeah, Alice, this is Zach from the DPW. Um, we, we have a number of policies in place for specialized PPE for, you know, sewer emergencies, that type of thing. But as far as the general public, I mean, we, I'd advise the guys just to basically avoid general public interaction. A lot of our work can be done independently, um, of public interaction. We're not entering any homes, we're not doing water meter checks, we're not doing anything like that. But, um, the guys should have a mask on them if they do happen to have to have some type of social interaction. Um, but like I said, a lot of our work is independent of both fellow employees as well as, um, the general public as, you know, we get through this pandemic.
Thanks a lot. Obviously, it's important to keep everybody safe, so I'm, it's good to hear that. Those are the recommendations. Thanks.
Is there anyone else out here that would like to speak, add to the meeting? Okay.
Good.
Is there any other business for the regular meeting? The Board's gonna be moving into an executive session. It's necessary to discuss the lease and valuation of real property at Kelly Green Golf Course, One Willa Road, Nahant, Mass. We will not reconvene in open session. So I'm gonna adjourn this meeting here, and I'm gonna move that we go into executive session pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 30A, 21A, and 6, to discuss the lease and valuation of real property at Kelly Green's One Willa Road. Uh, Josh, would you like to make that motion?
Sure. I moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to go into executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Paragraph 21A, 6, to discuss the lease and valuation of real property, Kelly Green's Golf Club, One Willa Road in Nahant. Regarding One Willa Road in Nahant, we will not reconvene in open session.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second, Mark Cullen.
Mark, further discussion? Okay, uh, we're gonna be dropping off this, uh, meeting, the open meeting, and we're gonna be calling into the executive session, um, meeting, uh, which is on your agenda, to discuss the Kelly Green situation, and, uh, we will not be coming back into public session. Thank you very much for, uh, everyone participating, and we will see you, hello?
That might have been Rocco. Um, so I think we need to be, welcome, take a roll call vote for that motion.
Yes, yes, I was just gonna mention that. Yeah, yes, that would be a roll call vote now. Uh, Richie Lombard, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Josh Antrim, aye.
Okay, the motion passes, and, okay, and you all have the number for the executive session?
Yeah.
Okay.
That is, buddy.
So thank, thanks everyone for participating. Um, and we will, we'll see you in weeks, Tony?
Next week, I think.
Actually, we have a, you know, the first, first Thursday is next week, so we'll.
Okay, so we'll be back on next Thursday. Okay.
Yep.
Good enough.
All right.
See you next week. Okay, thanks. I'll see everyone in the executive. Thank you. See you next week. Okay, thanks. I'll see everyone in the executive. Thank you.